Good evening, everyone. We'll pull the meeting forward. Please rise to the plate.
I believe it is certified by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. And this evening, we have a couple of special presentations. First being our monthly Student of the Month presentation. So Mr. Mjoevi will...
Absolutely. Well, why don't we start with Mr. Brier?
Right.
See, it looks like you've got the Klink Army here.
Me too, me too. So, early in the year, this front row here came to me and said, "We would like to form a club. We would like to do something to make our school better." And so, we contemplated all the different things that they could do. And we were coming up short because a lot of the things, their ideas were out there, were already being done by community organizations and things like that. But then, you all know about Klink. Klink came up. I went to my Klink crew here. They not only advertised, they rallied the troops, they got us a second-place win in the state. These kids are amazing. Mr. Wetzel and Ms. Connors, you have some spectacular students heading your way in a couple of weeks. So, we are very proud of these boys and girls, and we'd like to recognize them tonight. So, Grima, you guys all come on up here when I close the room. Luke. Hello.
Yeah, squeeze in tight.
How much money did we end up raising?
We raised almost $4,000. Squeeze over this room, maybe do like a little bit of a you. Can you get everybody?
Take your time, don't hold it close.
Good?
All right.
It's like a lot of cans of...
A lot of cans of... The one thing else I'd like to say is they came down, they did the announcements every week, and they gave the total to the school, and they all sang the Klink song. So, I think they should sing it. At least, just the chorus part, the part you really like. Go ahead.
Klink in it!
You know, the Klink project, obviously, you know, it's great because you raised money for the school. But, you know, what you're doing for the environment, and you're establishing good habits now, because it really reminds even the adults, you know, how many of us are guilty of really not properly recycling a can or a bottle when, you know, you can get money from it, people just get lazy. So, it's great that, you know, you took the time to remind us all what the right thing to do is. So, great job. Okay. Mr. Wetzel, Ms. Connors.
Matt, come on up. This is Matt Stubber. He is our Student of the Month at Highland Middle School. From his teachers. Fantastic, dedicated, exceptional, hard-working, kind, polite. These are just a few of the words that could be used to describe Matt. In class, he is a student who always puts forth his best effort on every assignment. He is always prepared, ready to learn, and actively participates in class every day. More importantly, after that, there's more importantly. More importantly, though, is his willingness to work and speak with any of his peers. No matter who Matt is sitting next to in class, he is always communicating with them. He's always showed this ability when volunteering at both SAIL and After-School Academy. During this time, he worked individually with many students to see him step up and work with students who may be struggling learners and make space for them to figure out problems on their own. It was so nice to see this. This is a rare quality to have as an eighth grader. All of his teachers feel that he is a pleasure to speak with and teach every day. This is from Ms. Pacola. I believe that was from Mrs. Delio. Mrs. Pacola, Ms. Pacola. Matt is a student who thinks outside the box. He thinks critically but also has an imaginative mind and often explores information in a multifaceted way. He finds great pleasure in reading and other hobbies that stimulate his mind. He is a great communicator and is always willing to help others who are struggling. He has been a big help in SAIL to all our students and has always acted in an administrative role for us as teachers. I am glad that he is being recognized for his positive contributions to our community. And from Mr. Saler. I am really happy for Matt. As his math teacher for the last two years, I know he is regularly prepared and ready to learn. No matter who Matt is sitting next to, we've heard a little bit of that already. He always shows off his ability when he's volunteering in SAIL and After-School Academy. And it's just, these are just great things your teachers are saying about you. Congratulations. Well, there may be a teacher on the floor.
Great job, Matt. And Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Judge.
Christian. Good evening. Highland High School Student of the Month for April 2019 is Senior Christian De Prima. Congratulations. Christian's Highland High School teachers have described him as responsible, intellectual, and very motivated. In his spare time, Christian likes to trap shoot and practice archery. Upon graduation, Christian plans to attend SUNY New Paltz and major in Electrical Engineering. I'm very proud to announce that Christian was named as this year's Salutatorian at the Career and Technical Institute at Ulster Boses. According to Mr. Jeff Hager, Christian's teacher at Boses, quote, "Christian De Prima has been my student for two years in the Ulster Boses Robotics and Advanced Manufacturing Class." During this time, I've watched Christian progress from dedicated student producing work at his high standards to student mentor, willing to share his knowledge with new or less experienced students. It is these qualities along with Christian's depth of technical expertise that will help build his continued success. Congratulations, Christian. You make us proud and keep up the good work.
Oh, done?
Now, I know there's students in the room. Can you explain what salutatorian is?
Absolutely. It's number two in the class. Out of every student who goes to, not only in his program, but every student at the school, salutatorian is number two in the class. Valutatorian is number one, has the highest grade point average. And salutatorian is number two, has the second-highest grade point average.
Well, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal. It's no easy feat, no easy feat to accomplish. So, we're very proud of him. Thank you.
There's a very good chance we have a salutatorian and a belletory with us tonight.
All right.
In a few years.
I look forward to doing the same thing for you guys. All right. No pressure, guys, no pressure.
And I like seeing the theme of Matt and Christian both in helping out other students, helping their peers, stepping up. So, thank you very much. It's a great quality back.
Again, on behalf of the board, we want to congratulate all our Student of the Month for this month. Just for the six Klink Army members here, I did quick math. I believe they raised $2,500 and then Hannaford kicked in another 15. So, $2,500 times a nickel, over 50,000 bottles, cans that you guys got the community to collect. That's awesome. That really is. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Christian, I want to tell you, I'm also on the board of Ulster Boses. And it is absolutely so thrilling to know that one of the Highland students is number two in the class at Boses. Good job.
Now, we have a long meeting, I know, so, and I know the students probably homework can do so. You are officially excused at this time if you'd like to. You can stay for the whole meeting.
Great job, everybody.
Congratulations.
It's called the parent name, the same two women.
It was a nice, nice one.
It is. Good, yeah.
Mike's a wonderful student. It's a little bit near my hand.
Oh, my children.
She's definitely...
My husband's nowadays, so he's... So, he especially around the rail trail, they're having a great time. And they're going ice cream.
So, it's great to...
That's a laser show.
Laser words, good.
Good evening, again. I'm thrilled to introduce some of the members of our Fed Challenge team. We have two advisors. One is here with us tonight. Ms. Christina Saylor, Mr. John Maganello. He had baseball.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, he wanted...
Sorry, he regrets he can't make it due to some athletic events. But we do have the Saylor and a few of, oh, and some of the students that are going to turn over the floor. So, Ms. Saylor can tell us all about them.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. We recently came back from our competition in New York City. We went down to the Federal Reserve and made a presentation for them. Our students worked hard researching monetary policy, which is quite different than fiscal policy and a little bit more complicated. They really stood up to some very difficult questions, particularly towards the end of their presentation. And they held their own pretty well. So, I have to say that I was really, really proud of them. So, what they would like to do is share their presentation with you today. Again, this was something that was done through the efforts of me. And I would actually say our economics expert in this group is Mr. Maganello, who is coaching baseball tonight and does wish to apologize that he wasn't able to make it. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over. Now, when they did this presentation, they were at a panel. So, they sat with kind of a table in front of them. So, that part of it may be a little bit awkward just with the spacing in this room. But they're looking forward to sharing what they learned with you. So, without further ado, I introduce Chrissy Paluzzi, Isabella Theory C., who is subbing in. Si, Volcunda, and Cassie McMahon. So, Chrissy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so, let's move on. Yep. So, it's been a little while since we've looked at this presentation. So, bear with us. What we did is, this is essentially an economic forecast for, it touches upon the 2018 year, but mostly upon the 2019 year, and future trends that we've seen and past trends that we've seen. Alrighty, so, good evening. At the beginning of 2018, the economy was being doubted by many. Many feared the economic expansion would come to a halt. However, the economy proved itself to be very resilient. We've seen full employment remain and tax relief drive a wave of capital investment. All the while, lower tax burdens have caused a rise in inflation. We've also witnessed property values and home equities on the rise and finally recovering from the housing crisis. The trend has shown promising signs of economic growth in District 2, New York State and surrounding areas, as well as the United States as a whole, and we predict a healthy economy for the 2019 year. Housing is essential in looking at our economy as a whole. When housing is improving, so is the economy. In a strong economy, people are buying new homes, in turn, leading to improvement in GDP. In Slide 3, it is visible that the housing market has been on the rise since 2008 housing crisis, especially in District 2. It is a positive effect on the market as a whole because it increases sales of raw materials as well as the plumbing, construction, and lawn care industries. This also helps employment rates. If no one is buying houses, it slows all of the linked industries. Right now, the trend is slowly going up, which means consumer confidence is high in the markets. In Slide 4, foreclosures are getting lower since the 2008 crisis, which is essential. We have most definitely bounced back since the recession, but have to tread lightly and keep our growth slow. The chart on Slide 6 shows the national consumer confidence from March 2018 through February 2019. As you can see, prior to January 2019, consumer confidence was at some of the highest levels seen in the last 15 years. The index took a hit in January due to the shutdown, but it is up again in February due to the reopening of the government. In order to restore consumer confidence, interest rates cannot be raised by too large of a percentage, otherwise consumers will be deterred from spending. As shown on Slide 7, the GDP has remained relatively stable around 2.5, with a slight upward trend following the dip in the market in October. The dip came following the large spike from August to September. This leads to Slide 9, which shows the GDP growth rates from the years 2001 to 2009. In 2004 and 2005, the GDP was growing rapidly, hitting rates above 3%. In 2006, the Fed raised interest rates in order to attempt to control the market, but action was taken too late. The recession hit in 2008, which is shown by the negative GDP rates for that year and the year following. Coming back to where we are now, Slide 9 breaks down the current GDP growth rate of 2.61, which was slightly up from January and February. Boxed in blue are aspects of the housing market contributing to GDP, which of both are in green. The rapid growth in the housing market was a major contributor to the recession in 2008, and we must approach the current growth cautiously. We fear that the overall trend of GDP increase will become increasingly rapid, leading us towards rates above 3%, which historically have been a bit of a danger zone. The Fed must increase interest rates in order to prevent a repeat of 2008, but should not do it in too rapid of a way to deteriorate consumer confidence and slow the economy to a halt.
All right. Consider three elements of this curve. First, it shows nominal interest rates. Inflation will erode the value of future coupon dollars and principal repayments. The real interest rate is the return after deducting the inflation. The curve therefore combines anticipated inflation and real interest rates. Second, the Federal Reserve directly manipulates only the short-term rate at the very start of the curve. The Fed has three policy tools, but its biggest hammer is the federal funds rate, which is only a one-day overnight rate. Third, the rest of the curve is determined by supply and demand in an auction process. As seen on Slide 11, short-term yields have outpaced longer-term yields over the past few years, flattening the yield curve and raising concerns that the U.S. economic progress may not be able to keep up with the Fed's tightening. The spread between the two-year and 10-year yield has fallen negative before every single U.S. recession since 1970. More specifically, when the short rates rise, the spread between the 10-year yields and the two-year yields tends to narrow, and when short rates fall, spread widens. In particular, the increase from 1977 to 1981 was accompanied by a flattening and inversion of the curve. This particular pattern has been happening since 1970 and has predicted major recessions. If the Fed pauses, the curve will likely reverse course and steepen as solid economic growth and weakening but manageable inflation. We're forecasting that the 10-year yield treasury will increase significantly from current levels and trend within a range of 3.25 to 3.75% in 2019. And now, please flip to Slide 12. I want to address the first graph that is shown in this image. If we look at the inversion periods circled in yellow, typically, it's ended in nine to 15 months between the inversion and the beginning of a recession. Presently, we are not there yet. As you'll notice, the yield curve nearly always turns positive before we actually go into recession. As of now, the portions of the yield curve are flat. It looks like the beginning of an inversion. Raising interest rates by our rate will lower that huge growth of the incidence of short rates outpacing the longer-term yields and let the Fed gauge and control our economic growth.
The dual mandate is like sitting on the couch with your sibling, and you each want to watch your favorite shows, which happen to be on at the same time. Most of the time, it's a give-or-take situation, and the balance of keeping full employment or watching those shows and low inflation, watching parts of each show, is a sweet medium that has not been found. Think of it as an economic anomaly. However, recently, the Fed has found that sweet spot and kept unemployment hovering around a 4.0% mark. To many who don't comprehend economics, they would say it's a fairly large number. But to the Fed, anything under 5% is considered fully employed. As you can see on Slide 14, the employment in both December of 2017 and November of 2018, the unemployment rate for New York State was higher than the average of the whole United States. In December 2018, we finally reached the average of 3.9%, matching the New York State rate to the United States rate. All the while, inflation has decreased. If you look at this graph on Slide 15, you will see the rate decreased from 1.9% in December of 2018 to 1.6% in January 2019. A healthy inflation rate is anything at or below 2%. And to see those numbers fall below the 2% mark shows a strong economy. With the rising wages in New York State alone, we are expecting a bit of a hike in the inflation as the consumer is now yielding more money. Even when taking into account the wage rise we recently had, the wages have remained relatively stagnant since about the early 2000s yielding little to no net growth. As portrayed on Slide 16, you can see the nominal income has significantly increased over the years, but the real wage, which is adjusted for inflation, has remained relatively stagnant. The problem with stagnant wages is that even though the economy is growing, that growth is not reaching the average worker, which means they cannot invest further in the economy. The problem is then perpetuated by the increase of inflation. Today, we have given you a presentation that can only be described as optimistic but highly cautious. We recommend that the Fed continue to raise interest rates, but at a slightly slower schedule than currently in place. Rather than an increase of 0.25% as the Fed did in quarter one, we propose an increase of 0.15% per quarter over the next four quarters. This rate is what we consider the sweet spot of not too high and not too low. This increase will control the GDP growth to a sustainable level as no increase whatsoever could lead to too rapid of a growth. We recommend a slower rate of increase in order to prevent an inversion of the yield curve, restore consumer confidence, and benefit the economy as a whole. In 2019, the worst climate change, and ones I imagine everyone in this room has heard before. Most of you probably have some general knowledge about it, and I'm sure for some, you won't take on it. Climate change is very quickly becoming a severe threat to the U.S. and its impacts are having increasing effects on our economy, including a declining GDP. As shown on Slide 19, the projected reduction in annual GDP growth is projected to decrease between 0.2 and 1%. Last year, agriculture contributed $1 trillion to the U.S. economy. However, warming climate is bringing on higher temperatures, droughts, and extreme weather conditions that are causing significant damage to the U.S. agricultural sector. It is predicted that for every degree Celsius temperature rises, corn yields will go down an average of 7.4% and wheat yields drop by 6%. As these resources are restored, the GDP will decrease due to a shift in production cost in the agricultural sector. The PPF represents the point at which a country's economy is most efficiently producing its goods and services. Factors that can affect the PPF are technological advancement, research and development, and one that can really hinder her is natural disasters, all which are exacerbated by climate change, which is destroying natural resources across the country and the world. PPF has diminished or shifted left due to these increasing natural disasters. As represented on Slide 20, hurricanes and wildfires, due to wildfires, have caused the U.S. to more than 1 billion in losses. Additionally, repairs of electricity generation, transmission, and distribution systems from recent hurricane events have cost billions of dollars. Connet has given PSEG investors over $2 billion in response to the shown Sandy. The average of infrastructure is only such an increase as severe weather conditions become ever more inclined and ever more extreme. These causes the unbridled decline of resources, which leads to a decrease in the U.S.'s GDP. So, what does this all mean? Many pieces of the economic puzzle are interrelated. Each one feeds off the other. All the indicators presented, excluding climate change, show characteristics that include an upswing. Wages are rising, housing investments are on the rise, the GDP is increasing as well as bond yields, short-term rates in commodities, and the unemployment rate is still decreasing. Because of the rise of all these financial factors, inflation will gradually increase. As a result of all this, this supports our conclusion of a 0.15% increase of interest and will balance out the foreseeable rise of inflation. As for climate change, we feel that while it may be an outlier among the data, it must be considered now. For if action is not taken to resolve this issue, our economy will feel the effects in the future. We thank you for your time today, and we leave you with this quote by Joe Moore. "The time to save money is when you have some." Thank you very much.
Can we, just out of curiosity and not to hit you in the sore spot, but what was the grilling that they gave you that was very...
Curious.
They, should we tell them the exact question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Shannon. You can take that on. They started grilling them on a number of topics, but the one that they hit them the hardest on was climate change. And I think it's interesting in light of the new NPR poll that came out today that said schools aren't teaching climate change. We were actually asked specifically why that's something the government should address and how that is not necessarily a result of improper forest maintenance.
I think, well, I think you presented it very well because, obviously, this effect on the GDP is going to be significant as well as between lost product and the issue of reparations, or not reparations, but fixing the repairs and, what's the word, disaster relief. And it's going to have a clear impact on the GDP. And what I liked was that it actually, the fact that you drew attention to it, even though it was outside of your, the trends you were showing and indicated, is something that you definitely have been addressing. I thought, well done.
Well, I taught economics for nine years, and this is way above, you know, what most high school students are...
And they were competing against...
Very good.
They're competing against schools that have an entire course of challenge.
Right.
And they're all economics-based charter schools, so, you know, I give them a lot of credit.
So, I invite you and your class, on May 14th, the district, you may not realize this, we're doing a bond sale. And everything that you just presented affects how much the district will have to pay in the future for the money that we have to borrow for school buses and things like that. So, May 14th, mark the date, we're going on the market, okay? We're going to go back to the market, move for money.
Would you bring up about the curve? It's very important. We were talking about interest rates too at the last meeting, the last couple meetings.
Thank you much. Very impressive. Thank you.
Ms. Saylor, you represented very well here. We'll let Mr. Maganello know.
I will certainly let.
They got homework. Okay. Moving on, we have the segments of reports. E to resolve, Board of Education, upon recognition as superintendent of food and knowledge, reviewing the following reports. Our Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, March 19, 2019. Our enrollment report, March 1st to March 29, 2019. Our internal claims order report, January to March, 2019. Our extracurricular reports, and our tertiary reports, January and February, 2019. Motion, please. Motion by Tom, second play of discussion.
Lisa, could you just talk a little bit about the unencumbered balances as of the... Well, if you look at the health insurance code, and if you look at the debt service codes, there are some unencumbered balances that should be encumbered. In March, you will see a different story. We're still, I'm trying to teach the staff a different method of accounting for the district's health insurance. Very simply, the general fund had been paying for everything, and the, it was balanced out at year-end. So what I make the staff do, and again, it's still a learning process, at the end of every month, we balance out health insurance. And, I'm sorry, long explanation. They're still getting the gist of how to do that. So, at the end of March, I think we have a true picture of our unencumbered balances. It's been a struggle. It really has. I'm trying to get them, it's nice seeing this big money, but it just can't be right. Yeah.
Any other questions?
From the perspective of the internal claims audit report, and I know I typically assess, but just in terms of the number of items that we're seeing on that report, Lisa, just from your perspective, is that some of them just seem like ones we shouldn't be seeing reoccurring over and over again? Can you give me a specific, just some of the, you know, the PO dates, and just making sure we're doing the education that we need to, to whoever's submitting them, to make sure that we're not?
So, again, working with staff, and I'm also working with the claims auditor, maybe not to be as stringent as she has been with her questions and her rejects. I feel if we are having a PO after the invoice, there might have been a little problem with communication, or else, oh geez, I forgot to do a PO. It's not, it's not significant. We don't see an abuse of administration going out and purchasing things and then asking for reimbursement. It's just the opposite here. I must compliment administration and the teachers that they're very, very knowledgeable about the purchasing process and that they do need a purchase order. And many staff have felt comfortable to come into my office and say, gee, this is what I want to do, but I'm not sure what the process is, and we'll help them through the process. So, I really don't think that this is significant.
And then from the perspective, because I did notice a handful, I think for all different reasons, in terms of the amounts changing, just maybe due to tax or due to, is that stuff you would expect to see?
Yes, oh yes.
You would expect to see that?
Yep, this is all normal.
Wouldn't you think that your AP person or whoever's putting them in would know not to include the tax in it?
Sometimes it's a little difficult to read an invoice, and this district has, we reimburse folks for taxable items. Don't forget, this is not just the general fund and the federal fund and the cafeteria fund, but this is also the CM fund where a lot of fundraising goes through. So I question tax, but there's been a history of reimbursing tax. So that was also a philosophy on my behalf compared to what the district was doing.
But these are very small amounts we're talking about.
Yeah, this is nothing, this is not significant.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the amount of reworking and really number of items at all.
So, not to bore you, but we've been doing a warrant every week since I'd say December, and I'm trying to get the process with accounts payable and the claims auditor and myself as purchasing agent streamlined. And we are, I'd say about ninety percent there. Previously, the purchasing agent was not looking at every individual invoice, and I look at every bill that is paid. Why do I do that? I'm purchasing agent, I want to make sure that what I signed off on or clicked on is actually what's being purchased, and there weren't any changes. And also, it helps me keep track of the budget and what people spend money on. So next year, I might have suggestions on how we can purchase items differently if I see an aggregate come through. So it just helps me to have a better handle on the district's finances. This is nothing to worry about at all. The folks, they're doing a great job, you know, with all the changes that I've thrown at them, they're doing a good job. Thank you.
Lisa, with the treasury report for February, and normally on all your treasury reports, at the end, you have fund age, which is the capital fund?
Yes.
How do we, how do I interpret that as where we are currently?
Well, that's an excellent question, Mr. Jerome. We were just working on that this week, and the auditor will be here Friday. I have my theory where we are. I would really like him to confirm my calculations are correct. So stay tuned. We'll know next Friday. I can't release it, but I think we'll have some good news there.
Okay, appreciate it.
Quite timely, timely question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, fair, opposed, so carried. Our principal report, Joel?
Hey, well, I don't have too many additions. I actually just want to, I think the picture, hopefully the picture came through of what the STAR lab looked like, so I would like to just publicly acknowledge our PTA. The kids loved this kickoff to park. Every child got to go into the STAR lab and had a forty-five-minute presentation with a science educator, basically, and she tied it into reading, and the kids walked out very excited about the park program that just got kicked off. It's funny, I was saying before, you can always tell when it's April, because Joel loses his voice. The flowers come out of the trees and I can't talk, so. And then just, you know, it's all listed there, but the CLINK program, I do want to also acknowledge Mr. Mizell. He dropped off a lobster trap. If you remember last board meeting, I said, our kids don't know what a lobster trap looks like. Couple days later, I get a call, do you really still need a lobster trap? And I'm like, do you have one? And he did, and he brought it over. And so, the lobster trap is on display in the front lobby, and during the process, we collected, I think, three hundred and ninety bags worth of bottles that would fill, not bags, lobster traps full. So now the kids have some sense of what a lobster trap looks like, how many bottles could fit in there. So, I think we'll take it one step further next year when we do this project, and we'll give the challenge to the fifth graders for them to take the lobster trap and the dimensions of it and to decide, you know, what it would look like in a room, and we'll put it, you know, string and make them see what it would look like, not in the lobster trap, but in a visual volume-type space. So, so that'll be, that's something that came up that we thought about afterwards, so that'll be next year's process. Kindergarten registration went extreme, or screening went extremely well. Quite a few people came out that day to get their children screened. We did it earlier than we've done it in the past. We usually do it during the month of May, but because, I think because we did it earlier, there are some families that still haven't been screened because they were thinking it was May. So Elizabeth said that there are some additional packets out, and we'll make arrangements to get those kids looked at before placement is done. Any questions?
Thanks for the stats on the ELA exam.
Yeah, it was.
No, just to report it, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think it is a downtick, but it's not as big of a downtick as we would have liked. I do have already, my, I've got numbers are lower for math, because some people in their letters specifically said ELA only, but we'll have the kids take math and we'll have them take science. So, but you know, that's, that's next week, and we'll send a reminder letter out to remind parents to have their kids get a good night's sleep, and it's like a catch-22. You want to send that letter out to remind them, so they get the kids to school on time. But if you remind them, then it might remind them to write a letter and opt out that day. So, so hopefully, we'll see what happens. The math tests are about to arrive in, actually, they're, they have arrived. We've accounted for them and get answer sheets ready, and we're ready to go for next week. I mean, the middle school's ready as well.
Now, does Bosie scrape them now?
They get sent out to a third-party score.
Not even Bosie? We do it through Bosie, so it's.
We send it to Bosie's and then they send it to a contractor.
And what is the projected this year?
Well, we don't get the scores from that company. We get the scores from the state, so it, August.
Still probably on the same timeline?
Part of those tests are not scored by the outside contractor. They're scored when they, the sheet comes back, but the outside contractor is scoring is all of the constructed response and the long answers, and then everything's put on a bubble sheet. The kids score for all those pieces are all bubbled in, and the two bubble sheets, or the one bubble sheet in the case of ELA, gets sent into the computer, and that's how it's scored, so.
It's a long process. Yeah, we're not very effective to that process.
Yeah.
And part of it is, when the state gets the scores from all the schools across the state, they're doing a lot of norming, and so it's not every year, it's not the same cutoff score or three. They look at how the whole state performs. That's why it's always such a hard, one of the reasons, it's a hard predictor, because you can't say, all right, everyone needs to get a, you know, three-twenty-five. It could be three-twenty-five one year and two-eighty-five the next year, or just depending on, and that's where they get the reliability and the rigor, and, you know, is this a little bit harder than other years, that kind of thing. So, but that's one of the reasons it takes so long for us to get it.
And I also mentioned it here, you may have seen the news about the computer-based testing. There were glitches. We were paper-based on this one, so it didn't matter. We do have the field testing coming up. That's luck of the draw. I mean, you put in that you're willing to do computer-based, and I got a thing back saying I'm doing paper-based this year. So, I did computer-based last year for the field testing, but, you know, they randomized that. I think they had more people willing to do computer-based this year for the field testing, and so they do need to have some people do paper. So, I think, did you do computer-based? So, that'll be sometime at the end of June, or the beginning of June. End of June, listen to me. It's only two months, we're going to be moving up in two months. A lot to do. Thank you.
I'll send a couple copies of this around. They come back to Sarah when we're done, but what this is, is they wrote my report. Mary Leahy, one of our ELA teachers, found out about this Young Writers Project, and it's, this ends up being called Stranger Sagas. And I remember, I've been in so many classes, and a teacher will say, you know, it's in the table of contents, and the kid, the kid's looking like, what? Right? Well, when they got this book, when this was delivered, they knew the table of contents, and they instantly went there, because their name is in it. There are, all of our kids that wrote for this have now been published in this book, and it's really fantastic. They literally went right to the table of contents, reminded their name, and, I just picked one to read. "The Creature from the Basement. As I walked down the wooden creaky steps, there was a cold breeze. I reached the cement floor, and a metal door stood in my way. Another noise echoed in the damp, dark room, except this time it was more dreadful and horrifying. I opened the metal door and saw two figures in the room. The first was a young boy lying down motionlessly on the floor. The second was a muscular, hairy, ravenous creature eating the boy's legs. The creature looked at me. The creature stood up and ran towards me with a spark of hunger in its eyes." Right? And if you, you know, it kind of comes from Stranger Things, which was a Netflix series, is that, it's kind of like on that, but we have a great number of students. Pretty fantastic. All right? It was a lot of work for our, for Mrs. Leahy to put that together and get that out, but, I mean, she came down to me with packages of stories, package just sent off, it was pretty, it was pretty awesome. The other thing I just want to talk about briefly is I did go to Boston with our eighth grade class, and I want to say, as I reflected on the trip, the most difficult thing that happened was on the way home, the last half an hour trip, I had to turn around and speak to a couple boys, because they were getting a little bit loud. And I reflect on that of being, you know, forty-eight hours with ninety kids, and the wonderful behavior they engaged in, and I think about it, and, and I watched the teachers and the students together. That, I did, through the whole trip, they, these kids want to behave, and I think that speaks so highly of the relationships that our teachers work and work to develop with kids, and it's just, it's really pretty fabulous. I couldn't say enough about it with their kids and with the teachers and what they did. And did, not even to have to, I mean, I was in charge, obviously, but not have to be in charge, when something, you know, the kid, we'd be going across the road, the teachers would just fan out and make sure everybody was, you know, it would just happen just like that, and it was, it was a fabulous trip. So, that's it. Any questions?
Very interesting.
Don't read that before you sleep.
Trying to, is there any more scout stories in here?
I have one addition, I actually have two additions. I'd like to briefly talk about the senior trip to Disney. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Wessel. We had ninety-six hours, not forty-eight, with sixteen senior, high school seniors, we, we go double, but they were a little older, too. So we had sixty high school seniors go with five chaperones. My only advice to the senior class advisors were maybe more than five chaperones, because it was, it was a lot. But it was a fantastic trip. It was one of the, I've been on several, in my twenty-eight years as an educator, I've been on several overnight trips, and this is probably one of the best ones I've been on as far as behavior goes. All the students were, generally speaking, on time when we were supposed to meet somewhere. They all complied with expectations, and it was just a fantastic trip. We, excellent weather. We were exhausted, if anyone's ever been on a Mr. Heath trip, Michael Heath exhausts you on purpose, which is good. And it was just a fantastic all-around trip, and I actually look forward to next year. I was just talking to Mr. Heath about it today, and I can't believe I look forward to going back to so much in Disney World that I have never seen.
There'll be more next year.
And there's going to be more than sixty?
Yes, Star Wars land.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant more than sixty students. Anyway, it was a wonderful trip, so it was, every, a good time was had by all. And now I'm hearing some of the kids, as they walk by me in the hallway, they're saying, hey, Mr. Dumer, we're still Disney. I said, well, me too, but here we are. We have memories, though, we have memories. So what I do have in addition, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our new electives that we're offering next year at Highland High School. We have one returning elective and six new electives that are going to be offered. Science counselors are currently meeting with all the students to create their class schedules for next year, and as I said, we have six new electives and one returning one. Following electives are available to all students, though upperclassmen generally have room in their schedules, for them, ninth and tenth graders don't have as much extra room in their schedules for them. So, for the most part, it goes to eleventh and twelfth graders, but really anyone where it fits in their schedule. So we do have, I'll list all seven of them, and I'll go back and just say a little bit about each. We have the Return of Public Speaking, that's a credit-bearing course through SUNY Ulster, and because one of our English teachers left this year, and our teachers weren't approved by SUNY Ulster, we couldn't offer it, but next year, we will be offering it. Mr. Tatum was approved to teach it through SUNY Ulster, so it will be a credit-bearing course, public speaking. In addition to that, we've, we're going to offer Workforce Ready, a mouse class, we'll go back to that, music theory and songwriting, guitar, astronomy, and the wonder of science. Workforce Ready, you may remember Shannon Ramirez was here a couple of months ago, talking about things that she's doing in her classes, and she created an elective, talked about herself. It will focus on career exploration and twenty-first century soft skills that are needed to succeed in both collegiate and professional life. And she created an elective, uh, taught by herself, it will focus on career exploration and twenty-first century soft skills that are needed to succeed in both collegiate and professional life. So I'm hoping that kids sign up for that, so we can run at least one or two sections of that. Uh, Mouse Class, M-O-U-S, it's Microsoft Offered User Specialist. This course taught by, uh, will be taught by Mr. Forman, will allow students to become proficient in, in and obtain certification in various Microsoft platforms. Including Word, PowerPoint, Access, Word Ac-, uh, Microsoft Access and Excel. And students get certificates that they mastered it, I'd like to take that class myself. Uh, Music Theory And Songwriting, uh, this course will be taught by Mr. Shaw. It's designed for students who wish to gain a better understanding of the underlying principles of music through practical project-based approach. This course will act as an introduction to music theory, to the study of melodic, harmonic, and rhythmic concepts, incorporate various periods and styles of music history. Uh, also another musical elective, Guitar, in this elective, uh, that will probably be taught by Mrs. Keach, students will receive guidance and direction in solving problems related to playing the guitar at a beginning level and will learn many of the different styles, skills, and techniques required to become a successful guitarist. Uh, we also may be offering, hopefully, Astronomy, that, which this course will most likely be taught by our new Earth Science teacher, whoever, whoever that might be. Because we are going to also offer Earth Science as a science next year. And goes along with it, very often, teachers of Earth Science also are very well-versed in Astronomy, I do believe that was a class that was offered here years ago?
We did have the middle school.
Oh, it was the middle school, wasn't it here?
Yeah, the middle school, I had the one high school course.
So we'll see how many students are interested in that. And finally, we have another science elective that is, as of right now, it's gonna be called The Wonder Of Science. Uh, this course will be taught by Mr. Lynn, it's designed to provide students with an opportunity to design and conduct their own scientific experiments. Students will be encouraged to pursue, uh, pursue scientific phenomena that interest them personally. Topics of potential research include area of physics, chemistry, biology, human health, psychology, geology, forensics, and genetics. Generally revolves around, um, as I said, scientific experiments and wonder and exploration.
And Mythbusters.
And like Mythbusters, exactly, so as I said, electives will, all the electives will run as long as students sign up for the classes. So it's my hope that they will all run, so we'll know that in another month or so when, uh, the counselors are done meeting with students and I'll get the list of what everybody signed up for, then I have the fun job of putting the puzzle pieces together to make sure that works, so, yes.
Are there any charges, any fees associated within the courses, like the Microsoft one or the public speaking?
Um, yes, public speaking, it is, since it is a college course, uh, it is, uh, college tuition. It would, it would, we'll pay just like any of the, any other of the college courses that we offer. Through, we offer many through SUNY Ulster and through SUNY New Paul, so it would be the same as, as that. And the other class that you asked about, Microsoft.
The, uh, Microsoft offers, you know.
I don't believe there, there are charges, I, I'm unaware of it at this point. But I will investigate, I will find out. The only one that possibly might, that I haven't figured out yet, is the guitar class, 'cause we don't have any guitars. Uh, but I'm hoping to, depending on how many students sign up for it, I may, you know, call around, see if I can find some, uh, good beginner guitars. But it wouldn't be any, that wouldn't be, uh, as far as I know, any costing to the student.
Have, have semesters for full.
For, depending on the class, some of them, I don't have them all written down here, but some would meet every other day for the full year and others would be a semester class for the half a year. It usually works better in our schedule when it's every other day for the year, 'cause then it works, it'd work in the science labs or health or gym PD. So, for the most part, it'll, it'll run, if not every day for the year, every other day on a A B schedule.
Just curious in terms of how we came up with that list, is it based on?
Excellent question, some, I, I didn't do a formal survey to the students, um, because it, really the time snuck up on me, I hadn't realized how soon the counselors were going to meet. So I, I asked teachers, what, can you talk to your students, what would you be interested in teaching, so, combination, some of them were, um, teacher-driven, like, I really wanna teach this and I really think that some of the students are going to do that. And Mr. Shaw, for example, really wanted to teach the, the music theory class and songwriting, and he mentioned him in class and he said he had, in his band, in his band students, many of the students said, yes, we would love to take that. So, um, another one, like, uh, The Wonder Of Science, Mr. Lynn talked to his students and how the other science teachers talked to their students to see what would be interested, what they'd be interested in. So it was an informal student poll combined with, uh, teacher interest.
That's great, fantastic.
And The Wonder Of Science comes off of, um, some PD that we sent all of our science teachers through, Paul Anderson. Uh, and he, his kind of, his, his theme is the wonder of science and, um, really using that inquiry and, and, uh, project-based or problem-based model. So it was definitely an outgrowth of that.
Absolutely, yes, before, we met very often before the meeting, Chrissy and I meet, 'cause she tells me what she's gonna talk about, I, so we don't overlap too much, so. I told her, I said, you're probably not gonna talk about the electives that I'm gonna, so she was in my office and saw on the list and she's a bit jealous.
Very jealous.
I said, well, we have to, you know, you should be happy for the people coming after you.
I am very happy, but very jealous at the same time.
Are there any further questions?
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, director's reports. And we have a question, we have several of our directors here, if you have any questions.
Um, Karen, if I, if I give you a template for some, uh, some statistics I'd like to look at, would you be willing, if, if I'll copy Tom on email?
Sure.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, Patrick, you had noted in your report that E S S A funded programs, Jeff, just curious what that is, if we've had it before, when selected, what were you?
Uh, we haven't had, it's basically Title One, uh, they've changed the names.
Okay.
Um, we haven't had a, they call it a distributive, kinda like an audit, where they just look at where you're spending all the money.
Yep.
Um, and if it aligns with what the, uh, grant that you wrote in the summer. Um, this is the first one that I've gone through, um, so it's actually, um, due next week. Um, so we're finalizing all the paperwork that we, uh, so some of it includes, uh, purchase orders, uh, salary schedules because we have a lot of teachers funded through, um, our, as a funded, uh, grants. Uh, some of it is statistics on our numbers, uh, so it's kind of variations, procedures, policies, protocols. So it's compiling all of that information to submit and all that, there's a, I don't know the number, but there's a bunch of different indicators that we have to submit evidence for, to show that we're following it, so, uh, once we submit it, they'll review it and then they'll come back with something that says, you know, we want you to take a look at this or make sure you're doing this with that, so. Uh, usually there's always some feedback for us to change or to look at how we're.
Okay, yeah, just keep us updated on like, uh, how we, um, I'm sure it'll be a while, but.
Yeah, we'll, um. Yeah, I don't, uh, you know, they give suggested timelines on how long it takes, but I can't probably tell that.
We never know. Absolutely, well, that's why.
Thanks.
Well, Mr. Miller, I was looking through yours and I know there's a difficulty getting a, anyone to put in a bid for, or an estimate for the coal welding pads?
I think it's because of the small scope of the job. I think we're, I have one more option and then it's probably gonna fall on doing it ourselves.
Okay, these are all the local contractors, so nobody wants.
Haven't gone there yet.
Peter, question, uh, you, you, you mentioned a, an issue with HVAC units, uh, being incorrectly wired or stalled wrong. Are, are those attributed to our current project, associated with our current project, or those older units that are?
Most of those are older units, but we have had some things that turned up that we've gone back to DJ and, and have, you know, TBS to work on. But, uh, a lot of the problems that we've had ongoing for years, uh, we've been fixing this year. But we've, we've had less special projects to, for our maintenance guys to work on. Like we had a room two hundred in the middle school that has run wild for probably twelve to fifteen years, if not longer. And we've had thermal environment, TBS, accidenty mechanical, all kinds of people look at that unit, nobody's ever fixed it. And Stephen Rizzo and Dave Doyle actually fixed it this time and it works properly. Steve Rizzo has learned a tremendous about, amount about the electronics and stuff that run this stuff and how the valves are supposed to be working and how they're supposed to be wired and all the things to tie together and figure it out, how to test it to make sure it's doing the right thing.
Do, do you, well, the current contractors in our, in our current project, the seventeen point five million dollar project, part of the closeout documents, do they do any startup and commissioning with their HVAC systems? For you, 'cause that's part of their, part of.
They do, but.
Through the design team and our, our C M to, uh, you know, initiate that group coming together to meet with your staff to do, you know, startup and commissioning.
I think it's, uh, typically, it's not coordinated well enough, it's at too fast a pace, and it's at the wrong time of the year and it's not where you can find out if it's actually working or not until they walk away. And then you gotta figure it out and find out if it's not working properly and then bring them back.
Yeah, I guess, summer's not the right time of the year, but current, very now is the right time of the year, 'cause you're heating, plants are still off and running.
It's a great time for heating systems, I mean. I mean, we're, we're on.
They really, I guess my question is that they haven't done that startup and commissioning with this current project that's ongoing?
They do, but they, I don't, I think that any startup and commissioning and, and even if Maria was here, I think that even the kitchen equipment and stuff is, is way too fast, way too short.
It's different questions too, as you learn the gear, other questions come up.
I mean, they can come in and tell you how to turn the light switch on, but a month later when you find out that the light needs something, you don't have an answer.
You hate to do, but you gotta usually pay time to have them come back and train, 'cause it's not necessarily.
But it's part of the requirement, that's why I'm.
They've done that, we've closed out the project.
But it doesn't, it doesn't.
With any new building management system, you know, coming online with this, um, that should pick up a lot of problems also. That's gonna give you a readout as to what.
Well, it'll, it'll show you things.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, at least.
But it won't show you what the problem is. You can look at it as something in it, at it, like the fin tube in the wall, it'll tell you that it's operating at a hundred percent, but the room's cold. Now you gotta figure out why the room's cold, because the valve is wired backwards. It's showing that it's open and the room should be hot, but it's wired backwards, so it's actually cold.
But it could be, it could be pinpointing it a little bit more.
Well, that's one of the things, is that with them paying more attention to it and having, they have the computer program, so they can work on the buil- the building management system and see it themselves, and pinpoint, it has solved a lot of problems that have never been solved before.
We're gonna solve them in less than fifteen years now.
That's, that's amazing.
We have, yeah, we have, because we had, we had issues at the mil-, at the middle school with the, the three new unit vents in the sixth grade wing, the, um, I think it was the actuators for the movers failed the most, and they're six to nine months old.
Agreed, I, I just don't wanna get into the situation, two thousand project where we had, uh, electric outlets not wired or not even installed. We had, uh, ventilation units that weren't wired, part of the project. I don't wanna get into that situation, two years from now, you come back to us and say, yeah, we gotta rewire four exhaust fans in the middle school because they weren't done during the project. To me, that's not your job, that's our, our management and our design team to make sure those items are done. That's what's part of that commissioning and startup, because if they turn the switch on, that fan doesn't run. What do we do, we gotta go check and see if it's wired, but if they don't do that, you're not gonna find out if that fan's running for four, five, six years later.
Well, I think, I think we're.
And I know, I think back to what Mike said, that we're all closed out now, Lisa, are we closed out?
No.
Nothing, except one A.
We have. We have three contractors that we still have open, all the rest are closed. Um, as far as gone to the state, all of one A has gone, we're in the process of reviewing, um, one B, which.
One.
Closing that out, but those three contractors unfortunately touch, touch many aspects of one B.
And is there a reason for them not being closed out?
Peter and I have been working with the architect on getting the necessary paperwork to have it closed out.
Two of them are electrical contracts, one is because we haven't gotten pi-, final paperwork.
Right.
The other one is, we have determined through the analysis of the architects, engineers, that the work wasn't completed. And we are working on resolving that to what the design specifications were, while also trying to work it out so that it doesn't interfere with some of the things that we're doing with the two thousand and twenty project, where we were not aware that the two thousand and fourteen project addressed some of those things. 'Cause we thought they were actually left out and we've gone back and tried to address, most of that's in the auditorium. And we're trying to make sure that we're not throwing bad money away, 'cause we gotta get it right, so. That's in the process of being rectified.
Is the stuff that you're referring to not being done, was stuff was billed for and wasn't done, or we just?
Well, it's, it's not really billed for, but it's part of the contract, so catching it in the contract and saying, whoa, you know, we're paying you, now we need to have it completed.
But that's good news if it gets resolved, yes.
Correct, and I think we're a little further ahead of the, the curve on it than we were in, or the school district was in two thousand and one, two thousand and three, 'cause there was a lot of stuff that we had to address out of that project. I think we're a little bit further ahead of it on this, but I think that that whole piece of the architect, the C M, and the contractors making sure that all the pieces are in place and work has to be slowed down a little bit, it's, you know, we're done, here it is, go, here's paperwork to buy, we're going, you know, and it's.
And for curiosity, who picked up on these anomalies in the, in the auditorium?
It was, a lot of that was, and I can't, I'm not gonna take credit for it, but it was, a lot of it was conversations that I had with Pat Flynn, the architect, because of some of the questions that were raised a little bit by.
Absolutely.
The architect, uh, engineer saying, where's this?
Where's this?
Once they said, where's this, then we started digging into it.
It wasn't our C M that picked up on this?
Digging, no, I have to say, Miss.
Well, our C M's contract terminated in September eighteen, here we are.
So we didn't have that contract stipulation in terms of private completion again?
Correct. That's why I, and completion is a key word in a contract too, because of this situation, 'cause contractors are notorious to drag, drag projects out because nobody's on their back to perform closeout documents, add builds and all that stuff.
Well, thank you to you and the architect for, for picking up on it, but we do need to find a way to, to make sure we're not saying, to make sure this doesn't keep occurring. You know, and it's the job of the construction management team and we need to find a way to, to address it before the contract terminates.
I think there was a clause in there for time, for additional time.
Not the last one, this one there, the last one was.
This one there isn't either.
We didn't modify it.
We modified it, but it's not to completion. Alright, so.
So you could have, I'm just saying, you could have an architect if you want, you gotta pay him.
Yeah, but when you're taking the bids and still the project, it's, it's your attention and hope that it's all included to take those bids.
That's why I think they were more vigorously legally reviewed in this next project.
I think if we keep up on the timeline, there should be ample time for the, the, the team to review it, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be good.
Okay.
Any other questions for our directors?
Uh, is there, do I have something else to come back to?
So, I just wanna go back to the claims report and I apologize, I mean, I don't feel like I'm doing, um, your question justice. I wanna put it in perspective, so the claims audit report you received was, um, for the month of January, February, and March. The total amount of claims that were audited were four million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. One thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine claims were audited. There were fifty-three claims which you commented on, so that's less than three percent. I just wanted to put it in perspective, and, um, I think I'm gonna ask her to do this on a monthly basis instead of aggregate it and break down the totals and that way every once you can see the percentage.
That's good perspective, I appreciate you.
Okay, so, I just wanted to amend that, that's all.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, real quick, going back to the capital project, are we in litigation with the contractor agreement?
Um, we may be very soon.
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment, but we may be very soon. We have two contractors, which we have quite a bit of money on the table and they're just basically unresponsive.
That's right.
They really have walked away.
They have their money.
We have their money, significantly.
But we don't have the authority to bring in another contractor yet?
We're working on it.
We're working on that, yes, now, alright.
Their contract, alright.
'Cause I believe you have options under contract, but.
I guess the unfortunate thing is, at this phase, is. I guess the unfortunate thing is, at this phase is that the onus is on us as the district and Mr. Miller and Lisa and Tom, because our design team basically is pretty much out of the picture now. We went on to a different design team for our $8 million. Our construction management contract is, has terminated as of September of 2018. We're now into May of 2019, so we don't have that support moving forward with this claim. Not only do you know the specifics of the, of the claim, not only know how they were generated, were they initiated a year ago during the contract phase where our management team was on board and our, our design team was very active? And how did it get to this point, you know, six months, eight months later? Without being resolved?
And we don't have, we don't have the right to penalize, but we do have the right to assign the work to another party.
Not unless we pull their bond. And that's gonna be very difficult at this stage. Lisa, is that money left in schedule of values or is it retained, right, that they're just not coming towards for?
Oh, no, it's in schedule of values. Yeah. Yep, it's amazing.
Would they just move on to another job?
I'm not really sure, but they have not been as responsive obviously as we have liked them to be.
Sounds like it might be time for facilities. Is this facilities?
We're meeting next week.
Is it, would it be necessary at legal there as well?
Maybe.
Well, at least, I guess maybe informed the committee.
I feel good, I feel good that we're holding the cash.
We have holding cash.
We got the cash, but at least it flows out into the projects to, for Lisa to receive the.
What would we anticipate closeout? Are we right in the window?
Yes, we are right in the window. We're trying to get it done for June 30th.
Alright.
Um, and in fact, we're shipping a bunch of stuff out Friday. The auditor will be here Friday, May 2nd, and I would feel more comfortable about where we stand, but we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Even with those, you know, three contractors that are not finalized, we have to move forward. I think that Mr. Miller is not giving himself enough credit as far as trying to track down these contractors and assign the work and have the work completed and have them show up. We were talking with the architect who basically was done on a weekly basis to try to get all the outstanding paperwork done. A little concerned because I want to get these things filed, I have a deadline and I'm looking at change orders and the change orders that we approved the past four months, they're not even up at SED yet, so to me, I think that I need to follow up with the architect on that in order to submit them myself. It's, yeah, I can't close out the project if the state doesn't have the approved change orders or if they don't have the change orders and haven't left them yet. So there's quite a few open ends, but.
It's a little more than a bathroom remodel, it sounds like.
Yeah.
This isn't the same architectural team that we're engaging in.
No.
Thank goodness.
And I believe I still have money on the architect team, I haven't paid them their final payment and sitting on that.
Is our, is our CM helping us during that?
Yes, the CM has been helpful.
Kathy, transportation. We're covering all our runs, sports and everything's good?
Yes, we are.
That's huge, thank you.
Yes, we have everything. The only thing I wanna add to my report is we did an updated video with Mr. Castellano, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, in the high school, the video club. We spent a day doing it here outside with our team and our own kids, so that's gonna be really great. Mr. Fear will be very happy about that. For our kindergarten orientation day, we showed them the kids.
Is like a safety video or?
Yeah, it's a safety video, yep, and how to board the bus and cross, like nice. So we're really excited about that.
That's so big.
Yep, and to have our own kids in it and, um, so once it's completed, everybody will get to see it and then we'll put it on our website, I believe he said.
What a great use of resources, that is.
Yeah, so the club needed to do a video, so it was really great and our team was excited about that.
Big difference at this point this year than last year.
Oh, good, I'm glad everybody's happy, I'm very happy too, it's been very enjoyable.
It's actually time to talk about expansion. Expansion as in, is there active school looking forward, is there additional active school runs that we would benefit? Because right now we have just a 315 bus run, where I know other schools have additional runs.
We also have a 430 run.
Oh, do you, okay.
They did have the academy that we.
I think it's over now, but.
It is over now.
Not a daily. We don't have a sports run like many other schools do.
We, um, we had it canceled twice, I believe so far for the 315 run due to not enough staff since the beginning.
Yeah, right there. Then that's one that isn't just athletic, active school. I think there's, you know.
So that's who's getting notified and that's why.
Bolster our service. I think there's opportunities that will benefit students.
Carol, quick question, smart school investment plan, that's gonna approve by the state?
Well, the application got accepted. They haven't, they haven't reviewed it yet.
Oh, accepted.
I thought it was accepted. Like all, all that I was. Accepted, hasn't been reviewed.
They received it, they accepted.
It's a rotation, except you have to.
Yes.
I thought we were on.
Till further notice.
You sent it and they accepted.
Don't hold your breath.
Okay, so that could be a couple of year process. How long was yours, Mike?
Three years. Did you specify?
Well, the camera, the camera were two years.
Was the actual equipment specified by model number in that or?
Yes, but I could, yeah, and I had to, I just went around and around with them saying I needed a project ID number, then I didn't need it, then, three times, three times they kept changing their mind, but, so it was vague enough for them at the end.
Okay, anybody else for directors? Good, we'll move on to approval of committee on special education minutes be resolved. Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendation in committee on special education according to the amendment of the CSE meeting of month of March 13, 14, 15, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 25 and 26, along with the month of April 3rd and 8th. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings of March 19, 26, 27, 29, along with the month of April 3rd. CSE meeting, no meeting, transfer in, non-trip point current. Currently, this committee authorized the arrangements for such students' special education programs and services. Kevin, motion please. Motion by Tom, seconded by Neil. Any questions? Just Patrick, real quick, when we say we pointed the minutes of, let's say, March 19th and then the next paragraph says amendment agreement, no meeting on March 19th, so we accepted the minutes of March 19th, but then there's no meeting on March 19th?
No, so what that means is on March 19th, there could have been meetings that day and on the same day in another school, they might have had an amendment agreement, no meeting. So this covers all three buildings and it might even have been in the same building, I'd have to look back, but, um, it's just, yeah, this is, and you're using, so there's a ton of stuff going on each day, so there'll be amendment agreement, no meetings, that just needs to be made a minor change to 9B. And we talked to the parents, the parents in agreement and they said, we agreed, we don't need to have a meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Close, so carry. Approval committee on preschool, special education be resolved. Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendations of the committee on preschool, special education according to the amendments, CPSE meetings of March 27th, along with the month of April 3rd. CPSE amendment, no meeting, month of March 19th. CPS, no meeting, transfer in, non-trip point currently. This committee authorized the arrangements for such students' special education programs and services. Kevin, motion please. Seconded by Neil. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry. The personnel, are we okay taking the personnel as a block from A through B? Okay, I believe we have any representation of this information. So we'll take it as a block unless someone has objections, you know, standalone any item, we'll do that, although I will take it as a block and then we'll recognize those that are here this evening. So can I have a motion to accept personnel to block made by Mike, seconded by Ed? Discussion?
Just wanna thank the retiree, Beverly Belizic, for her service.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry.
Mr. President, I do wanna thank the people who are able to come tonight and for waiting patiently, so we have tonight Sarah Goodwin is here, so I want to raise her, Sarah's a TA, leader patient, she's on a nice mood. And we also have with us Lindsay Warren, Lindsay. So thank you very much.
Welcome forward, working with you, welcome to the Highland family, both of you.
Yes, congratulations and good luck.
Good luck. There'll be a homework to do. You probably have some paperwork to do.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, our student right.
Hi, so there has been a lot going on in the high school since I've last been here. On March 28th, the foreign language department hosted foreign language night. It was a very successful event. I know while we were there, I think we raised $134 for the Corzine Nekki family, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly, which I thought was really great considering it was just after they had that tragic event. So for our students to just step up and donate right on the spot, I thought that was really generous of them and they've been donating ever since. I think the foreign language department actually raised $800 on its own for the students, like in the classes, for the family which we bought gift cards with and stuff like that for them to use. It was run by the Spanish and French five students, they cooked, they cleaned up, we essentially ran it with the aid of Senora Ode, Senora Fero and Uzuki. And the Spanish four and French four students also provided entertainment there. Some of them were really good, the tayam, those kids, love those. And there were several different rooms where you could go and take in different activities or games from events in different countries. I know India was one and then I think we had a Spanish room where you could do a pinata, so fun events. The seniors went on their Disney trip, from what I heard, it was great and they really had a blast. And I didn't hear that there was any problems. On April 5th, or April 4th I should say, Sad Club hosted a blood drive and collected 24 pints of blood and that's enough to save 48 lives. I think that's pretty amazing that we had students that were willing to take time out of their schedules. They all have to be upperclassmen and get to be 16 or 17 to donate and those kids, most kids have a very heavy course load in those years, so I think that's great for them to take time out of their schedule to donate, so kudos to them. On April 11th, the high school hosted the Munchen Dinner. There was an overwhelming response from our community. I don't know how much they raised, the number and amount yet, I don't think everything's finalized. I couldn't believe how many came out to support, it really shows how connected our community is and that's really great compared to other communities around us. And thank you to the businesses that donated and the families that donated, everything. And then there will be a pre-prom assembly this Friday and it's two guest speakers, one from Sun Yolster, one from Stop DWI, and it is essentially to advise students to make smart and safe decisions, not just prom weekend, but every weekend. And that's it, any questions?
Any questions?
Good times this Friday night. That no balance. Yep.
And what, what safety measures are involved in any of these particular ways?
Well, every other year, they do a car crash.
The mock, whatever you want.
The mock car crash, sorry.
We're gonna do a real car crash.
Mock one. Um, this year, they're just gonna talk about personal experiences or the one who was one of the personal.
Yeah, the ultimate, every year, one, one year it's a mock car crash, another one. This here, it's the two guest speakers, one is a victim that was impacted by drunk driving and the other one talks about the ramifications, long-term ramifications of it. We're just heading into that time of year sadly that from this point to graduation, I'm sure even every adult here can tell you about in their own class graduated, that there's always tragic deaths that occur and there's so much hope and future that's snuffed out in the instant because of a poor choice and sadly, this is the time that happens.
One happened last year, I've been, I'll be one of my good friends, it was right after graduation, the kid graduated and went out to a party and then didn't come home, so that hit home for several people I know. For kind of students to make safe decisions and smart decisions.
Thank you for all the charity.
Okay, business and operations, health and welfare contracts, Spack and Hill Union Free School District and Hannon School District be resolved, board of education upon recommendation superintendent school approved of 2018, 19 health and welfare contract for 11 students in close to $1,002.84 per student for a total of $11,031.24 of the Spack and Hill Union Free School District and authorizes the board president and district clerk to execute the attached contract. Have a motion please, motion by Heather, seconded by Mike. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry. Budget transfer be resolved, board of education upon recommendation superintendent approve the following budget transfer for 2018, 19 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 8692 for $40,000, have a motion please. Motion by Mike, seconded by Tom. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry. Talent?
Okay, so even with the week of break where there weren't many people around, there's been a lot happening in the month of April. One thing I wanted to mention, I don't know if I've ever talked about it before, but I held a substitute teacher training early in the month and I hold those about five, five or six times a year whenever we get, you know, eight or nine people that could start subbing in for all instructional substitutes, so it could be teaching, but it also is TAs and aides. And part of the, part, it's about two and a half hours, part of it is paperwork and getting into ASOP, our calling system and all that, but a big chunk of what I do as well is go through some of our procedures in each building, we give them a handbook, but I also talk about strategies for being a substitute teacher and, you know, some scenarios of how you can respond in particular situations, working with students or even simple things like what happens if you show up in the morning and there's no lesson plan there because the teacher had an emergency and talking about having your toolbox, so even if there's a lesson plan and it only lasts, you know, the period is 42 minutes, but the lesson plan lasts 30, you know, what do you do with that extra 12 minutes? And it really is very helpful, especially for our newer people who either are working on their degree or have just finished and haven't had a ton of classroom experience, it's very helpful that way, but we also have people who have retired, so it's great to get their feedback and to help the, the newer, the newer people. But it's, it's a really good experience and I, I think it really helps our, our substitute teachers feel more comfortable when they start in each of our buildings. And again, there's nuts and bolts as well as, you know, where do you check in when you go in in the morning, who are your contact people, what, you know, giving them phone numbers so that if something does happen on their way, they can call. So it, it really is a, a good experience, that's something that Roseanne Bain actually had started before me, but, but we continue to do that. And when teachers or when the substitutes, they say other districts, it's a lot of times they're just kinda saying welcome and that's about it, so it's, it's. Right, and so it really, I think it helps our substitutes have a better experience here overall, much like we've talked about with bus drivers and substitute. here overall, much like we've talked about with bus drivers and substitute bus drivers the last few years. Substitute teachers are very difficult to find. It's a nationwide phenomenon. It's just harder to find people who are willing to come in for the day, so we hope that by helping them and making them feel more comfortable, they're more likely to work for us than other districts. It's kind of where we are, but it works pretty well. And, you know, every session, again, I try to do it when we have between eight and twelve people, and from that, you know, sometimes we get ten subs that work regularly, sometimes we might only get five, but it at least gets a start on the process, and I think is a nice way to introduce them to what our expectations are in some of this world. So we did that in April. I attended several trainings. I mentioned them at the last board meeting, but they were happening after the board meeting. So the first week in April, I went to a NISBA policy workshop up in Albany, or actually Latham, and it was about the school climate survey that will be part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, the federal legislation. What was interesting to me, I thought there was a mandate that we had to start it in fall of two thousand nineteen. Everything they were saying there said there is no mandated year that we must do it. The commissioner is recommending that schools get involved, so we will be doing more work with that. But the school's climate survey would go out to parents in the community, teachers in the, teachers and instructional staff as well as non-instructional staff, as well as you can also offer it to students grades five through twelve. There is a sample, a sample that has been created by the federal government. New York State also has a couple of other ones, so we'll start looking at what we'd like to use. We've actually had the high school done a little bit of work, which was with students, and trying out some of the questions and doing a little preview of that here. So as far as our policies go, because of course with NISBA, that was one of the, one focus of it, our policies are in pretty good shape. I might be bringing a couple of things to you in the next month or so, but there wasn't a lot that we didn't already have in place in one of our policies or another, so we were pretty good there. But that was very interesting, and, you know, it's always nice when you go and hear about what's happening in other districts and how they're handling things or what response they've had. They had a couple of different speakers there. Some people had brought, you know, almost their entire board, other people, was a representative or two, either administratively or from the board, so it was a good experience. And then the next day, Patrick, Bill, and I were up at the University of Albany for the NISCUS Diversity and Inclusivity Summit Seminar. That was a very good experience. I think they had keynote speaker who is the superintendent in Shenandoah District, but then they also had three different breakout sessions, and we decided to actually go to the same ones so that we could go and hear and then be able to talk about it a little bit more. So we went to one that was talking about intersectionality, which is really looking at different levels of, I guess I could say, otherness, you know, that someone might be a person of color and also be female, and so that gives you two levels of intersectionality and two different experiences when matched together. She was a professor at the University of Albany, and we all three thought that she might be someone that would be great to bring in to talk, to work with our teachers too, so we're looking more at that. And then the second session was a little bit more about social interactions and thinking about where people are coming from when you're having conversations with them and your own responses to that. I can't remember the table of the session was, and then it gave us some time at the end to do a little bit of work with Ben, and so we just did some brainstorming and some thoughts for how we want to move forward with that administratively as well as with our teachers and students. So that was before, oh, one more thing before, right, Patrick and I went to a training that was sponsored by the Department of Homeland Security about the sexual harassment changes and updates and the trainings that we've been talking about that we've already done in district, but because Patrick and I are Title IX, Title VII, important major officers within districts, we like to go and hear other people speak about it so that you feel like we're doing what we need to do. The focus was a little bit more on municipalities. There were some school districts there, but it was focused a little bit more outside of the school realm. The one thing, one major thing that I came away with is that coming soon to all of you will be sexual harassment awareness training. The Board of Education needs to have that as well as, as well as all of our staff, so we're pretty good on our staff. But that's, that's one area that we'll probably be doing that either in the summer or we'll discuss more.
You've heard rumors of that.
I have it, I'm good authority. And then the last thing, just yesterday and today, Patrick and I were at Ulster Bosse's in the second segment of the High Tech High Professional Development that Bosse's offered this year, and so our two teams, one from the high school and one from the middle school attended as well, and this was a follow-up in the fall. It was much more about how to structure a project, what to think about, how to present and how to get buy-in. This was much more about assessment and then reflection and, and how to help students think about their learning, not just about the product that they might have done or what they did, but how they did it, what that, the impact that had on them as learners and as students. It was a really great experience. I was only able to be there in the morning, but the feedback that I've gotten from teachers as well as what I experienced there, there was very deep conversation that was happening between our team members as well as among the other tables that were there, and Bosse's is going to continue this initiative moving into next year. So they're offering a summer two-day session that's specifically for administrators. We'll be talking about that more as an administrative team. And then next year, they're doing a High Tech High two point oh, and that will involve partnering with community organizations to have more task-oriented, a little bit of what the PTAC program does through Ulster Bosse's, but, you know, a class or a group of classes might be invited to meet with, you know, a local small business or a local community-based organization. They might present them with a problem that they're looking to solve, and then the students come up with a, you know, a two- or three-week unit where they come up with a solution to that problem. So I'm excited about that moving forward. So it really was, I think, some of the best professional development, the just the process part of it that I've attended at Bosse's a long time. It's very, very good. So that's, that's what's been happening.
Any questions for Sarah?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, certainly hope everyone had a nice spring break. It's important to spend time with family and friends and a little unwinding and kind of recharging the battery because now we're in the homestretch here. So we're, you know, we're in the busiest time of the year, though, perhaps we're a little tired, but now it's, we've got to ramp it up, so we are looking forward to all the great activities that are to come, starting with tomorrow night is the Tri-Am Recital here at the high school. So the music recital. The support service committee, I've been going around with the members, so actually, I'll follow up tomorrow, but possibly next, I'm going to go back to next Wednesday now. Just Tuesday's not working for all of us, but maybe next Wednesday sometime in the AM, so I'll send something up tomorrow morning. Lisa Jelak and I will start our world tour on the budget starting next week, so we'll be going to the American Legion, we'll be going to all of the faculty meetings, I'll do Rotary, so we'll be, you know, just pitching the budget to everyone, so I look forward to that. I do want to shout out and thanks to Chief Wade and the Lloyd Police, just, not just for everything they do, but specifically they've been, they've done some great things with our Flex class. You know, those students were at the, at the station, got a tour. Today, the chief and Sergeant Olson were here, and the students got to go into the police car and, you know.
I think they got to go for a ride.
I think they even got to go for a ride. Yeah. Last time I had a ride in a police car, I can't tell that story here. No, it's in the back. They're really great, and we do have, the Special Olympics is coming up. That is March fourth and fifth, May fourth and the fifth. So it's next weekend, next Saturday, so we're looking forward to that. That is at West Point, so I'm looking forward to that. And today was Administrative Professionals Day, so thanks to all of our administrative professionals, also as Secretary of Defense, in case anyone, it's called Administrative Professionals Day now. So, but everyone, you know, everyone is back, they're, you know, very positive, and it's been a great return to school. I was at La Crosse, and I left, we were winning twelve nothing. Love it, sorry.
I left with the classmate.
Any questions for our rivals? Good, thank you. Okay, under Board of Education new business polling service agreement, Hailin' Central School District and Ulster County Board of Elections be resolved. Board of Education based upon superintendent approves the attached polling service agreement between Hailin' Central School District and the Ulster County Board of Elections for the annual meeting, which is to be, take place, which is to take place on May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Tom, second by Mike. Discussion? All in favor? Our Bosse's administrative budget vote be resolved. Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent of schools approves the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Educational Services administrative budget in the amount of six million two hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Camille, second by Tom. Discussion? All in favor? Close, so carry. Be resolved. Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent of schools recommends the election of the following candidate to serve on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Seat one is New Paulson, three-year term, Barbara Carroll. Seat number two, Roundell Valley, three-year term, Gail Hutchins. Seat number three at large, three-year term, David Thompson. So can I have a motion please? Motion by Camille, second by Heather. Discussion? All in favor? Close, so carry. Your old business. Remember to RSVP for the Distinguished Friends of Education Award to be held on May twenty-third in Kingston. We also need to discuss who will be the individual that's going to introduce and present the award to Randy. Superintendent will not be there today. We'll have some open discussion there.
That's fine. Is anybody planning on attending? I'm going to put you on spot one. Okay, I'm thinking of going to the car.
So we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Board of Education policy number five five four zero, Fund Balance Policy in accordance to Gadsby Statement number fifty-four. It's our second reading. Be resolved. Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the Hailin' Central School District Board of Education policy number five five four zero, titled Fund Balance Policy in accordance to Gadsby Statement number fifty-four, as presented to the board at this meeting. Everybody's okay, we'll move that forward. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Heather, second?
Yeah.
Second, second by Sue. Discussion? All in favor? Close, so carry. Some FYIs, Bosse CTE graduation, remember to RSVP on that. The annual meeting and election information. Request for absentee ballots can be obtained through the district website. Return it by calling the district clerk. Please be advised that the absentee ballots must be received by five PM on voting day, May twenty-first. The budget hearing is scheduled for May seventh at six PM here in the boardroom. I will not be here that evening. Normally, Lisa, I believe either if you don't say the regular meeting immediately following, we'd have to wait till seven PM.
Correct.
So does everybody want to wait, or do you want to just run your regular meeting immediately after the budget hearing? Sometimes the budget hearing is five minutes, ten minutes. If there's a big crowd, it could be five out.
So, so you follow the way afterwards?
Immediately following, so if we have to post it that way, can we circulate?
Yes.
Okay, also can we split board dues? Discussion, below are two options to pay. We can invoice April ninth of the use if the district would like to pay for the nineteen twenty dues from this year's budget, or invoice dated July first of the use if the district would like to pay for the nineteen twenty dues from next year's budget. What would you prefer? Is there any?
You should probably do it this year.
Yeah.
Oh, you have the one, yeah. Right. Is that all right with everyone?
So do it this year.
Great.
Great, anything for good welfare of the district? Any additional items? Anyone else to turn up? Okay, we'll open the meeting up with public comment.
I'm ignoring my own home, I don't... I guess a lot of it, a shout-out for our wonderful food service staff and sort of during one of the fundraisers, I had the pleasure of working one of the kitchens and the manner in which they keep it and the professionalism. It's, I've worked in many restaurants, and this is part of the beer that we do a wonderful one. So my compliments to Ray and to the good guys down there.
Thank you. Murray has an opening here, of course.
If it wasn't a conflict, this is...
Okay, anything else? Open meeting up to public comment? Closed public comment. Motion to adjourn. We do not have to go back to the effective session. Motion by Heather, second by Tom. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.